County Commission for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. Please stand for the pledge.
I would like to be just through the heart of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission's agenda for an item not listed. There is a five-minute time period per person. Anyone wanting to speak during the agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action may be scheduled for a future meeting date. And we have two people signed in. First is Jeanette Gibbons.
Good morning.
Morning.
And it's a beautiful day. Rick Weibel, he's going to be up here speaking next, and we've also recruited Jenna to help us with a demonstration that Rick is going to do. So Jenna has changed the password on Rick's computer so he can now act, so he cannot access it now. And I have a picture of the screen before the process started, and Jenna set the password without anyone else knowing what it is other than her. And I'm going to turn to my points now. I'm going to go back to election integrity, and I'm just going to stay with that topic. And I'm going to encourage that we open up lines of communication so that we can talk. I continue to come here and speak, but we're still not talking to each other. And I do find it a little bit discouraging that I don't get any type of email response many times. And this is a very serious topic. I don't know how we can turn our, turn away from it and just try to pretend that it doesn't exist without at least talking about it. So I'm going to return to Seth Keschel's 10-point, "How Do We Fix Things?", and he's just suggesting, and he also opens up his Substack to people entering their own comments, and "Let's Get This Done." So his 10 points to true election integrity, number one, clean out the voter rolls, number two, ban all electronic elections equipment, three, voter ID with paper ballots only, four, ban mail-in voting with some exceptions, ban early voting, again with some exceptions, drastically smaller precincts, I'll stop at that one. That is a topic that I've asked to have added to the agenda, and I'm going to continue to ask for that to be added to the agenda. Even though we have electronics that we want to use, because we just bought some new ones last year, the e-poll books, Rick Weibel has informed me that yes, we could still use the e-poll books. That's not a deterring factor. So maybe we cross that off the list, we can sit down at the table and again say, you know, can we really round up enough people to help at smaller precincts with all the voting and counting and all the work that needs to be done there, the poll watchers, the poll workers? And yes, we can. Yes, we start with that attitude, and yes, we can. Okay, number seven, ban ballot harvesting, number eight, election day as a holiday, nine, new reporting requirements for transparency, and 10, heavy prison sentences for all who commit fraud. Nobody wants their election be stolen, you, me, nobody. Voting is the way that we have our voices heard. We are a republic, so we expect to vote people into office who then represent us. And even after they're elected, I think it's important that we still continue open communication. We still have our voices heard through those that are elected to represent us. So I really do want to work with you on that. I did pull up Seth Keschel's further discussion about the smaller precincts, it's a couple of short paragraphs, I'll just read that. "Any realistic list of proposed changes considers the impact one point has upon another. In this case, a call to practically ban early voting will certainly be met with complaints, mostly from the left of impossibly long voting lines intended to suppress minority turnout. Like any political topic, the left and the corrupt in power seek to twist everything into a state of racial or emotional chaos, as they do with immigration when they make it about race and color instead of the economic and law and order issue it truly is. We need to cut down on the size of our voting precincts if we are able to realistically consider cutting out early voting. You may recall that early voting opens the possibility for organized fraud, like drive-through voting lanes in major cities, but also the potential of unethical actors to peek in on what the tallies are leading into the election day." And one of the sentences here, like I want to pull out too and just mention a little bit more, "Race and color." If we look back at our history in this country, how many ways have we let others control us and divide us? Someone asked me this morning, "Are there some good people on the county commission?" I said, "They're all good people. They're all good people. You're reasonable, I'm reasonable." Maybe you question that. I could sit down with any of you and have a great conversation, and we could do it where we split up so we don't have an official meeting going on. I know we have to stay under the radar with some things. We could have a great discussions, we could solve real problems and make real headway. Thank you.
All right, next is Rick Weibel.
Hello, my name is Rick Weibel. And one of the things I want to do for you here is, we are going to take this laptop that I had Jenna reset the password to, and I'm going to hack it live for you. Part of that is to demonstrate that our DS450s, DS200s, they're all made to the same motherboard as this laptop here. And what's interesting is that I can take this same thumb drive that's publicly available for download, go into a machine, reset the password, and in essence, basically go through and take full access to the machine. And when you think about lunch breaks, potty breaks, overnight, if I can do it in under five minutes, then we want to make sure that we're taking all of the previous process steps of securing all of our election equipment to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, such as making sure that the election equipment is behind a locked door, that the election equipment is video surveilled, that we are reviewing the logs of anybody who's going in and out of those rooms, that we're also looking at the processes of how we use those machines. Unfortunately, we're not using the machines to the best of their capabilities. We've shortchanged ourselves, and we've handcuffed our great election officials by not getting them the software that they need to actually conduct an appropriate review of the systems. There's actually something called an election management system and an election reporting system, specifically the election reporting system, would actually allow them to review the ballot images and the cast vote records to be able to ensure that the machines are, number one, calibrated correctly, number two, that the machines are programmed correctly, and number three, actually abide by the standards of the EAC to be able to confirm that everything on the machine was running correctly. It is under Chapter 7 of the EAC standards, under security 7.8 is the independent verification systems. That independent verification systems creates the cast vote records. It allows great employees and staff members to review those cast vote records and make sure that they're a complete match. You'll ask yourself, "Well, what are these cast vote records?" When you insert a ballot into a tabulator, it takes a picture of the front and back of that ballot, and then creates a result file of how that ballot was interpreted by the machine. Simply that's what it is. It is such a national standard that is actually a standard that comes out of the Department of Commerce, a subgroup called the National Institute of Science and Technology. This is the same reason why you don't see feet, inches, meters in that defined in state statute, because the Department of Commerce handles all of that. They provide those standards for the entire country. They also say that all of that information is for the public. This is why we see at a federal level that those cast vote records are not banned as public information. We also see many states provide it freely on their websites. For example, Dodge County, Wisconsin, you can go to their website today, and you can actually review their cast vote records to where you can actually see each of the ballot images, as well as you can see the interpretive file for each of those ballots right next to the ballots itself. And what's crazy is that we sit here and we worry about whether or not there's security in this. There is. Each of those ballot images has a time date stamp of when the machine was active for when the election was loaded. And so because that election is loaded, they all have the same time date stamp, making it impossible for you to connect a voter who voted with their ballot. It's built into the security. This is such a new standard that it actually came out in 2005 as part of the Help America Vote Act. So what's frustrating, though, is that we sit here and we talk over each other about the conduct of our elections. What I'm asking for is that we actually create an election performance team with two county commissioners, our great election officials, and the state's attorney, so that we can actually review all the federal statutes, review the new state laws that are coming in, but also to make recommendations for next year's legislative session so that we can continue to improve the conduct of our elections here in the state of South Dakota. We have that opportunity, and it looks like my time is up, and the laptop is not booting up right now, but it is, and it will, I've already reset the password on it already. And so with that short amount of time, I can reset the password, gain access to the system, and I've actually put another log file on there that if I had time to show you, that actually is a different date and time than the time right now at 8:41. And so you wouldn't actually be able to know that I hacked that laptop. And there you go. I just signed in without a password. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is number four. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Discussion or additions to the agenda?
We do have to add one item under exec session 125-2, subpare six for security.
Six, security. All right, any other additions to the agenda or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number five, the consent agenda items, which include the minutes, travel, education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorization, and the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Comments. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Posler.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter six, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Discussion, comments. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Posler.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, department head reports. Brian.
Morning.
Morning.
Seems like as quick as we moved from snow, now we're into the construction season. We began our four 10-hour summer hours on the 17th. We've been crack sealing, very busy crack sealing. We finished County Road 4, 6, 8, and 17, did some additional work outside around the county on 25 and 34 from the rubber we had left over. Tomorrow, we're going to be crack sealing the 1921 building parking lot from 8 to noon, and I've worked with Marty and Mills on that to make sure the parking lot's empty. Last week, we worked with Dustin to crack seal the BCOAC parking lot. This week, we're working on sign inventory from the damaged signs we've had over the, over the long winter. Last week, attended the 214th and Volga-Smare Avenue project meetings, and called the load limits and construction updates, attended the progress meeting with BMU banner and winter. It's been kind of going on a little slower order with the de-watering. I voiced my concern with some embankment issues sloughing under the pavement and intended to stay there. But overall, the project's moving forward, just a little slower than anticipated. Next week, on the 8th, they plan on closing down 44th Avenue South, or 44th Street South, the project that's going to go from the S-curves over to Western Avenue on our County Road 12. That will be closed next week. As far as our bridge projects go, kind of getting pushed back here with a little bit of weather we've had and the colder temperatures that the seasonal restrictions and the temperature requirements required to do the additional work out there on the Bruce Bridge, it's kind of pushed that back. So tentatively on the 15th, the Bruce Bridge will start, and then same with the County Road 19, the Box Culvert project. Water levels have continued to stay high, so they're kind of waiting for the water to recede before they begin that project. And then also the production of the precast Box Culvert sections is anticipated to be mid-May, but I'm not sure exactly where that sits, but I'm guessing that's going to get pushed back just because of the water, water levels that are currently under the bridge. So I will keep you guys informed of when those projects are going to start.
Just a quick question, you know, with the high water levels in that area, we close, you know, County Road 19 and also where the city or the utilities are closing there.
Yep.
As far as D2 routes, I know we have, we're taking everybody down 77 on that area.
Yep.
Where they are. Is there an anticipation of some shortcuts that we will need to keep an eye on?
We are going to be working with Madera Township on that road that we worked with them last year. Now that the Sioux rivers went down a little bit, that water isn't underwater, or that road isn't underwater, but we're going to continue to work with the townships to make sure that those farm implements and that have access to areas in between there. And same thing with the emergency services will be indicated when that happens to make sure that they can get to, similar to what we did last year. But all that information is available on the, on the BMU website. We've kind of worked with them in an effort to try to keep everything located in one spot as far as information to the public.
Do you want the anticipated date to finish the S-curve or to?
Well, the Phase 1 is anticipated, you know, that's kind of Phase 1 of the project. The anticipated date was August 1st, but depending on the de-watering schedule and that, it may get moved back. I'm, I'm hoping to get BMU in here the next time as the construction starts to update you guys also.
There's been some questions on whether or not our culvert will be done when they're done with that, and it all opens at the same time, or will we be?
Our substantial completion date is November 1st on our culvert project.
Okay, so it'll pretty much be all summer, it'll be closed.
Yep. But is it, it is anticipated to be hopefully opened at the same time pending on weather. Because there is another construction phase that goes up main, that there'll be time when that's down, but the 44th would be open before that would start.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning.
Just a quick overview with the jail inmates, six of them from Mata County. We continue to stay busy in the 24/7 area and also probably, probably Thursday, Friday, Saturday in the booking area. We have a lot of intakes during those times, but a lot of them are, are in and out. They either have a, have a bond they can pay, or they, personal reconnaissance and stuff, so, but the booking area stays busy. At the present time, we do have 103 on 24/7. There's 36 to come in twice a day. I have 10 on remote breath test, got 14 on SCRAM, 38 on UAS. So 24/7 seems to stay busy. We're still under, at COVID time, we were at, I think the highest was 150, we had 157 participants, and we have 103 now, so in a way, that's probably good, hopefully. But it seems like they continue to bring in DWIs, and it's not just first offenses, a lot of third, fourth, and fifths that are getting arrested, so. Got, finally negotiated the contract with US Marshal Service, so now we're waiting for the contract to come to us. They're willing to pay $95, which is what I charge other counties, $95 a day. They also will pay $30 an hour for any transports. At the middle of the night, we have to take an inmate to the hospital in an emergency, they'll pay $30 an hour for transport officers. So we're going to start out with 10 inmates, kind of work our way into it. I think that we could probably go up to 20, but I think we'll start with 10 and then just kind of, and they're willing to do that. They don't want to overwhelm us right away with everybody coming in at once, so. So we'll start with 10, see how that goes, and then, and then move up. So anyway, got the room, so we might as well help pay for the extra employees that you allowed me to have, so. Anyway, got some new hires. I have three in field training right now, and we just did an offer for the fourth deputy yesterday. So we'll, busy training and so forth. And as, you know, I talked to other sheriffs and other administrators, it's the same everywhere as far as when with our hiring. Is university police, they, they got three openings, the city police just hired two, I think they got another opening now. So it's not just Brookings County that experiences, it's all over. And I guess the city police are talking about going out and recruiting, actually sending officers into other states to recruit. I don't think I have to go and do that. It seems like I've been getting not as many applicants as we used to get, but the applicants we are, been getting are pretty, pretty good applicants. So this last round, I didn't have a lot of applicants, but the ones I did have were, were good people. I mean, they were, so I don't think we have to, have to go to that extremes yet, but to go out and recruit, so. Also, just, just to see what the commission would like to do, we haven't really made a decision or what you want to do on the intersection at 459 and 204, you know, that four-way stop. I, I'm, at this point, if the commission would like, and I know that, and I haven't talked to Brian about this at all, and I know his guy is busy and stuff, but if the very least we could do at that intersection is probably put the twirly birds up, I call them the twirly birds, up on the four-way stop. I did check some prices. I think the, I found a company that sells them for $100 apiece, and then I found another company, Flandre actually got me onto it, another company that sells them for $60. So they're not that expensive, and I think they're pretty visible. So if that's what you guys would like to do on that intersection.
I was thinking we were looking at some other possible intersections that we could maybe do, make a multiple order if there's some other intersections. So I guess I was thinking that between you and Brian, we're going to try to figure out some intersections. If that's the only one, that's fine, but I was thinking there were some other ones that might.
There's some other ones that I'd like to look at, too. You know, so, yeah. And I just think this is the one that we had a formal complaint on, so I just thought, I didn't know if you wanted to go ahead and, and we put the twirly birds on that one now, or if you want to wait till we do a kind of a overview of the county, it's up.
I would like to wait on the account that that road is going to be closed down here for construction shortly. You know, County Road 6 will be closed down.
And I don't have a problem. I just want to make sure we address it since we.
Yeah, and we do need to move on where they're making a decision if we're going to, what we're going to do with those, and so you bring up a good point. So I guess what I'd like to see is if there's any other ones by next meeting, if you could get to us that there's any other recommendation of other intersections that need the flashing or the, because I think they're 2,500 bucks, you know.
Around that, I think.
Yeah, for there, so it's, it's not cheap, so we just don't want to throw them everywhere, but if there's some intersections that we feel we should have done, I think we could do a package order and get them done. So maybe by next meeting, we should have that figured out, that works out.
Yep, that's not a problem. GIS supplied me with a map with all the stop signs, too, and the ones that I'm thinking about, you know, I'll do an accident, accident study on them, too.
Okay, well, let's put that on the agenda next, next time, and we'll get it figured out.
Okay, other than that, I, I don't have anything else.
Sheriff, I have a question. I haven't seen the marshal contract. I assume that will come to us for a final review.
Yes.
In a signature. Just a question on 20 inmates, they're going to start with 10. What's the average stay for these inmates or the maximum? Is there a maximum in the contract that we will hold those inmates for?
Until I see the contract, probably not. They're going to be in and out. A lot, they're all pre-trial, so it's just dependent on when their trial is. So there's probably going to be a lot of probably moving, coming, getting inmates, take them to. So there's, we're gonna be a lot of probably moving, uh, coming, getting inmates, take them to trial, bringing them back or whatever, so, uh, as soon as I get the contract, I will make sure we get it sent out. You approving it so you guys, uh, when we, when we talked about with the US Marshal Service, there was no indication on, uh, there would always be someone here. If I have ten beds, there will always be somebody in that bed, you know? If, if someone goes to trial and they're sentenced and they go to a federal prison, they're probably transported right away and then I'll have, then they'll probably bring somebody else in, so there always will be ten, ten, yeah. When I get up to twenty, there always will be twenty. But, uh, they did say if there was some reason that we ran out of space, you know, for our inmates, Brookings County, cause that's, of course, that's what we built the jail for, is our needs, is that they would go to another facility, so. But if our numbers stay down like they are, which is saying something about the, the county too, that we, you know, we're not out of control, you know, we're seeing a lot of more, uh, methamphetamine arrests and those types of things, but, uh, I think we can comfortably at some point have twenty, but again, I don't wanna. One good thing about US Marshal Service is that they're not gonna go out and, I know that when Commissioner Pierce was there, her concern was these inmates going out and then filtering and having nowhere to live and things, but the US Marshal Service, they go some, you know, they, they come and get them and they take them someplace else. They're not just released from my facility because they're all pre-trial. There's nobody that's sentenced that comes to, comes here, it's all pre-trial. Where now, when I have contracts like from Moody County and those, is that they don't come back and get them, they have to find their way back to Flandrew. And, uh, you know, sometimes the jail has to arrange transportation for them, sometimes get like beta bus or something like that or, or whatever, but, uh, with the US Marshal Service, that doesn't happen. They'll always be transported from my facility to, to someplace else, but, uh, but as far as the length of stay, you know, it, if one leaves, they'll bring more, you know, somebody back, you know, if it's sentenced or whatever, does that, does that help?
Yep, yeah, we'll look at it when we get it, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll make sure you guys get the contract that you guys can look it over, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Hill?
Good morning.
Morning.
The, uh, right now, we're under a red flag warning, starting at noon today, noon to eight o'clock. Burning, uh, any, burning anything is, is not recommended at this time. Be careful if you're throwing cigarettes and, or don't be throwing cigarettes out the window cause a fire can start with the low humidity real fast. May ninth, next week, Tuesday, I'll be running over to Ooma. They've got the South Dakota Points Dispensing Annual Conference, they're gonna try to start up and we'll see how long it lasts. Uh, May tenth, Wednesday, the, the International Standards Organization Building Code Review is coming into Brookings. They're gonna meet with me and Richard in my office and, and this review, they review our building codes, our zoning ordinances, the training for our building inspectors and things like that. So, well, as, as long as we can keep, uh, keep holding the same rate that we had last time, our, our insurance for our citizens will remain the same, so that's our goal in life, is to keep that rating as high as we possibly can. Uh, May tenth, we've got a welcome to summer event over at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. That's gonna be a, a good event. May eleven and twelve with graduations and some big hooting deal down in Sioux Falls. My office will be limited staffed, which means I'll be the one staffing it. If there's an emergency comes up, I'll just have to put a sign on the door and we'll get back to them as soon as I get back into town. And May eleventh, there's a PPCC pod meeting, I believe it's over at the hospital. That's all, I've got any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Bob. Alright. Letter A, action to approve agreement twenty-three dash twenty-six, an election agreement between the city of Brookings, Brookings School District and Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Comments?
Do you wanna talk? Um, yeah, I can speak to this. Um, so this agreement is used, um, for the cities and schools here in Brookings if they want to combine one of their elections with, um, the county during the primary or the general election. Um, the agreement also, uh, speaks to the city and the schools using the county equipment. Um, uh, we did, uh, hold a meeting kind of with all the stakeholders, um, and went over the agreement. All entities seem to be on board, so, uh, our office was happy with the agreement and we would recommend approval.
Any other comments? I, I was in that meeting also and so, um, it seemed like it was received understandably that reasoning's behind it and, uh, um, they were, seemed to be okay, so we will sign it first and then send it off to the other agencies for their signatures at their board meetings. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Letter B, an action to approve retail on and off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine licenses for July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, we can probably take all of these unless there's any type of, anybody that wants to abstain or recuse themselves from any of them. Everybody okay? Alright, we will look for a motion to approve for one, Brookings Country Club, two, Cousins LLC, ABR, number three, uh, Good Roots Farmer and Gardens, number four, K and K Enterprises, The Corner Gas and Goodies, five, Skyview Junction LLC, number six, SVK Properties LLC, Midway Camp, number seven, Wagon Wheel Resort LLC. Is there a motion to approve all seven?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Um, these are the annual renewals of the retail on and off, uh, sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. Um, as you stated, the license is for July first of twenty twenty-three and will expire June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um, all of the businesses have paid, uh, their property taxes, um, not to my knowledge there's been any, uh, compliance issues, um, and our office would recommend approval.
Comments, discussions, sheriff, any comments? Alright, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Letter C, action to approve John Deere investment proposal quote for twenty twenty-three, John Deere seven forty-four P loader. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
We had this, uh, first discussion back last June. Um, do have a payloader in the budget, it is at three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, obviously, this quote is for much more than that. We have deferred now for the, uh, be the third year in a row now, a truck. We're on the list, uh, I've called several other, uh, providers and people that supply the trucks, uh, sounds like everybody's in the same boat. We have no verification on whether or not we're going to get a truck. There, there again, our name's on the list, but we have no verification. Uh, so that's be the third year now we've deferred, uh, buying a truck and there is the availability to trade our, up on our loader. I know, uh, the price tag that I had requested amount was about a hundred thousand dollars less than what we are, uh, acquire, or what, what I would like to acquire. Um, I know this, this is a size up from what we, we do have currently. Um, this loader that we have currently has a grapple and has the ability to quick attach, which is not compatible with our other machinery that we have. Uh, this loader that I'm proposing would be kind of a standalone loader to use in the pit to load trucks out. It'd be a little bit more efficient for us, I understand the prices a little bit more, but, uh, we do have three loaders that are compatible with, um, with each other and this one would kind of be much like our cat, kind of a standalone, uh, one that we primarily use in our, our pit site locations, which we have been hauling a lot of gravel, uh, and we will continue to haul a lot of gravel as we have it sitting on the ground. So I just wanted to kind of update you guys on that.
So this, what you handed out is our major equipment request for twenty twenty-three that we, we approved?
Yep.
Is that right? And, and so right now, the dump plow semi truck, we're still on the list, so that's not here yet.
No.
The two pickups, we haven't done anything with those, right?
Correct, we haven't spent any money out of our equipment budget yet.
Gotcha, and then, so the third one on the list, the payloader, we, uh, requested three hundred and fifty, but it's coming in at four hundred and fifty, basically.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay, well, first, let's get a motion to approve and we can discuss. Is there a motion to approve? Do we have that? Oh, sorry, okay. Discussion.
Noticeable size difference, uh, replacing the nine fifty, um, is more comparable to six forty-four. What advantages to the extra, the size?
Extra capacity in our bucket right now, uh, you know, we demoed last year before we tried it, uh, or before, you know, bringing this proposal to you guys. Right now, it takes about six trips from the pile to our belly dumps to load a truck, where this loader, uh, we're looking at about cutting that in half, so it's more of a, a time thing. You know, a contractor works, you know, twelve, fifteen hour days, we're working, you know, eight, nine hour days by the time we get out to the site and out to the road, uh, so. I- it's more of an efficiency factor, uh, you know, within the last, uh, three years on average, we've had about sixty to seventy thousand tons that we've hauled out, so over the compounding summer. I'm just looking to, uh, provide a little more efficiency for our operations out of the pit and I think this would be one way to do it, uh, not necessarily cutting out any, any guys, but we, uh, you know, we do hop out of the truck, load ourselves at this more of an efficiency standard.
The attachments that we currently have will be adaptable to this, or?
The attachments that we currently have from the cat to the John Deere, this, this loader would be looking at just a bucket only. Uh, it could be, you know, if you look on the, uh, investment proposal, uh, you know, we could adapt this machine to have a grapple on it, but as our other machines, uh, do, we've got grapples and they're a little more versatile in and out of the ditch. Uh, well, this machine would be a little bit heavier, we probably wouldn't use it in those type of situations where we had last year, where we had the Duricho and, and spent dang near a month, uh, picking trees out of our ride of ways.
As far as our budget is concerned, this is about a hundred thousand dollars more. Where are we gonna move that, or are we gonna delete anything?
Um, even if we were to get on, uh, verification that we were to get a truck, the likelihood of the truck showing up in FY twenty twenty-three is highly unlikely because by the time we would get verification, it's six months from the date that you get the verification from the truck shows up, so. Uh, by the time that it would get the service bodies and, and, uh, the build done, we would be looking at twenty twenty-four, so. Uh, we, we are highly unlikely, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and flat out say it, it's not gonna happen. We ain't getting a truck in, in twenty twenty-three.
That would cover the additional costs out of the, this year's budget.
Right.
The other loaders that we have are, those still gonna stay going, or is there any of them that we?
The one that would be surplus would be that two thousand and three cat nine fifty. And our equipment, uh, uh, life expectancy, we do have our payloaders set at twenty years, so we'd be right at the twenty-year mark for our two thousand and three cat.
Is that gonna be traded in or just gonna be surplus?
Surplus, so I'd have to add it to our surplus list.
Have any indication of value?
Um, the last time that I had our, our, uh, uh, RDO equipment rep, um, it roughly fifty thousand. That was last year's quote, so I, I can't say whether or not it's gonna be right in that same area. I do have him on hand if he, if he does have those numbers. Do you have those numbers? And maybe Chad can speak a little bit on that.
Morning.
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 Could you introduce yourself, please?
Uh, Chad Kest, the RDO equipment, uh, out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Worked with you guys, uh, with the John Deere equipment, uh, you guys have, we've worked with for years, I guess, at that point. Um, the, uh, looking at this loader, um, RDO will, uh, always offer a surplus bid um, for any of the equipment, um, you, the county is surplusing. The bid right now, um, um, is around that fifty thousand dollar mark. I, uh, so when that time comes, we would definitely, uh, put a guaranteed bid of that on that, uh, machine. Um, if it sells for more, then of course, you know, on the surplus, then somebody would be able to pick that machine up at that point. But we, in the past, even with any of your other equipment, we've always offered a guaranteed bid so that you have a dollar amount to work with at that point.
The only other question I have is what's the delivery timeline on this particular loader?
That, August, September, right in there, time period. We have a slot machine, or a couple of different machines that we can accommodate with, yep.
Thank you.
What, what's, what's availability? I mean, it, are these hard to get? I mean, it's like we get one in, we're on the list and it's like, this is kind of our option or, or we gotta wait another six months, or how's that work?
Right, so there's, we've been able, yeah, fortunate to be able to have some slots available for customers, uh, if things do arise to be able to plug in. Otherwise, um, if we've ordered a machine, we've been able to see them in, you know, within a ten-month period, twelve, right in that ballpark, so, but.
So this is one you have on hand?
It, it's coming, yeah.
On the way?
Yep, we have, like I say, a few slots that don't have names on them that we are able to change codes or accommodate a certain feature, this or that, and, uh, not get bumped back, if you wanna say, for, um, the lead time at that point.
Alright, any more questions?
What's the gross weight of the machine?
Fifty-four thousand, fifty-four thousand.
About twenty-five ton.
Yeah.
And we, that'll fit on our trailer?
Yeah, well, our low boy is rated for fifty-five ton.
Alright, any more comments, questions? Thank you, Chad, appreciate you coming today.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, any more comments, questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes?
Hostler?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, letter D, an, uh, action to authorize South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit to conduct a combined audit for fiscal years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
So Legislative Audit hasn't done our twenty-one, FY twenty-one or twenty-two audits yet. Um, last I've heard, they're supposed to be here in a few weeks. Um, I think, uh, Finance Officer Lori Schultz has suggested that they do both of those, um, together this year. Due to staffing issues that they have as well, that's why they're behind schedule. So this, and this first action would be to authorize them to do both of those audits, um, at the same time when they're here, hopefully in the next few weeks. Um, at the same time when they're here, hopefully in the next few weeks.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Letter E, discussion and possible action to authorize a biannual audits by the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit. Is there a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
Discussion, comments?
This is a little bit different. This would authorize, um, Legislative Audit to now, instead of doing annual audits, just come every other year and do biannual audits for us. Um, the reason that this is even feasible is when, because we moved to cash basis, those audits. Uh, don't take as long as they used to, and so, um, I think it would be. Probably work out best for them to, just with staffing concerns too, knowing that they didn't have to get here every single year because that's not happening right now anyway, so.
Okay. There's, uh, I don't know if we're, this is a concern or not, but I mean, if we're waiting two years and if something is a mistake. Correction, you know, if we find a mistake. Now we can correct it within the next year, most of the time, and, and obviously they haven't been here because of staffing shortages, but I'm not sure. That's a great reason to go to bi, biannual, in my opinion. I, I, you know, again, it's been good. It's not like we're having a lot of problems or losing things, but you never know when and. I think it's good practice to have that audit every year, in my opinion. But, um, I'm not stuck on it either. I just think it's, uh. If, if we do find a mistake and have to have something where we have something in the wrong category and have to make that change. You know, to go back two years, uh, from that, uh, might be difficult, so.
Are there other counties in, in that that do this, biannual, on a biannual basis?
Yeah, there are quite a few counties, um. More, more counties than not do biannual, I would say. Some of your larger counties, especially those that are still on your full gap accounting, do annual. But there are. Quite a few counties that do biannual.
Have we, in the past, on any of our, our, our annual reports had a lot of corrections? Or major corrections, uh, would be a problem if it were a biannual?
No, I would say no. And, I mean, and it's not like they're not, the Finance Office isn't in touch with Legislative Audit throughout the year. They are. Um, if there's questions or concerns that come up, they are in contact with Legislative Audit and they help them, you know, with different, with different things, um. As, yeah, as the year goes, but, but I do understand Commissioner Krogman's concern as well. Where it is also nice to have those on an annual basis, so you do have them in case there are issues that do arise, so.
So what I understand is this request did not come from the state, it came from our Finance Office.
I believe so. I, I guess I don't know, and Lori is not here to answer that.
It would probably help the state though.
I'm sure it would help the state too.
It seems like no more to get done with one audit and they're turning around and start on the next one.
Right, it's kind of, yeah, the position where we're in too, you know, they just have, weren't able to get here last year in order to get twenties, twenty-ones done and, so.
I, I guess my thought would be that, um, you know, they're coming here to do the two-year audit now. Maybe we should hold off on this and see how that turns out. And if there's no problems and corrections are, are fine and we're not going back two years making changes and seeing issues. Then maybe we just do a test drive with this and then we can maybe revisit this down the road.
I guess I would concur with that. With that, I'll make a motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close same sign, motion carries.
Just a note too, usually someone with Legislative Audit comes when they present the audits. So I think that would be a good time to have that conversation with them too, and that, once they get these next couple ones done, so.
All right, sounds good. Um, number F, excuse me, letter F, discussion and possible action to provide additional funding for the Samara Avenue Reconstruction Project. Is there a motion to approve? Well, let's go discussion here and we'll look for a motion because I don't know if we're looking for how much. There's not a number on it right now, right?
No, there's not. Um, after our last, uh, meeting. Issues arose and some new information was shared and, uh. According to banners, we should probably get, um, commitments more, uh, in line. There's a couple verbals that we'd like to see some, um, contracts or agreements in place before, uh, the commission would commit. Also was, there might be some other, um, design criterias that we may go to. VOGA had a meeting last night and I was hoping Kelly would be here to share what the outcome was. Uh, they were gonna discuss if they were gonna be able to, um, allocate any more money towards this project. So we kinda, um, had a standstill after our last meeting. Um, they were gonna get some more information and we're gonna have another meeting, uh, in the near future. There's some issues with, uh, having an agreement and we, we should have an agreement in place with the roadway maintenance, uh, uh. The sidewalk, curb and gutter, um, storm sewer. There's just some, some fine. Things we need to get done and the railroad also, um, there's being some work done on the railroad crossing also, so. I think we need to wait at this time to, um, make a recommendation on, on our financing towards the project, so.
All right. Since we don't have a motion or anything, do we need to table it or can we just? No motion, so we're good. All right, we'll move on then. Uh, letter G, action to, uh, declare items of surplus property to sell via online auction or dispose of. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Um, these items, before you came from the Commission Department, um, they'd like to surplus the following these items. Um, Stacy, I do believe you said that most of these items came from the basement of the courthouse, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Just doing some cleanup work over there as we started, um, the security project over there and. There's a whole bunch of filing cabinets down there that, uh, nobody wants, so.
Yep, and we did, um, I did email all of the other department heads throughout the county to see if there was any interest in any of these, um, and there wasn't. So we would like, uh, the board to declare these items surplus. And we can sell the ones that are worth selling online or just get rid of, and like Stacy said, just clean the basement up.
All right, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Letter H, action to authorize Sheriff Marty Stanwick to apply for the Highway Safety Grant. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve. Second.
Second. Discussion, comments, Sheriff?
This is a grant that I've applied for over the years, but that always came to you prior to approval, so. Last couple of years I'm doing it the way you guys want me to do it, is to come before you. What this, uh, what this grant does is help with overtime and, uh, equipment, certain equipment. That, uh, goes with highway safety such as, such as radars in the cars. This kinda helps us so that. I don't know, all the radars aren't, aren't replaced at the same time. I can use some of this highway safety money to replace radars. It's an eighty-twenty match on equipment. That's how we get the, uh, uh. You know, and I like Ponce, we put the radar bar, uh, boards up and that's a eighty-twenty cost on this. The overtime is the, is that, uh, the total amount of overtime is four hundred and twenty-five hours for speed. Um, overtime and then for DUI enforcement is two hundred and eighty hours. What, um, and, uh, it's figured at, uh, the highest overtime rate. For, for, uh, uh, my deputies, so we get reimbursed for that. So, uh, what helps, what helps with this overtime too is that it, especially in the summertime. When I get more complaints on speeding in areas, I can assign a deputy overtime to work those complaints. Uh, also, each community has their dance and, and that, and I can put extra deputies out for that, so that helps with that overtime, so. That's why I'm asking is, uh, um, the total, uh, of the grant is thirty-three thousand five hundred, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Letter I, action to approve request to fill vacancy for courtroom sheriff's deputy. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Due to a resignation.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Letter J, action to approve request from James Smith to conduct a fireworks display for a wedding. At Good Roots Farm and Gardens at thirty-seven twelve Madera Avenue, Brookings, on Saturday, May thirteenth at nine thirty PM. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Would we have? Yep.
The only thing I ask is maybe, hopefully we'll get moisture between now and then. I think that's something they just need to check when it gets, at that time to check with our local fire department to make sure that. You know, when, when VOGA and other places do their fireworks, they have fire, you know, the fire department does it where this is gonna be private, so I would. I'm hoping we'll have moisture bef, before then.
Do you anticipate, you probably don't anticipate a burn ban at that time, would we?
At this point, if we get moisture, we'll, we'll be fine, but otherwise it's probably something to think about because we had a lot of fires in the last couple of weeks. So, but, at this point, no one's come to me or about a burn ban.
Right.
Is there a way to make this contingent upon a fire chief's approval? For dry conditions or wet?
Sure, we, we can kinda put anything we want on it, I would guess.
Yeah, it would seem to me that since it's been dry and we've had these warnings, we just don't know in two weeks if we're gonna have that much moisture, so I guess. My suggestion is that we either Marty's approval or the fire chief's approval.
Well, and we probably need to make them aware that it's going on, uh, so they're, if something would happen, they'd know where they're at and what's going on, so. Did you wanna amend, uh, make an amendment to that?
Well, we don't even have a con, we don't have anything in front of us except for a request, so the request. Is approved with the conditions of approval from either the sheriff's department or the fire chief.
Okay, so amendment to approve and, uh, with. A contingent upon approval of the sheriff or fire chief?
Yeah.
Okay. Friendly amendment with everybody, are we okay with that? All right, so, um, any further discussion? So we're given approval, contingent upon approval of the sheriff or fire chief and a notice to both. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. All right, Commission Directors' report.
Was a couple of weeks, the last couple of weeks, I did go out to Pier, um, about two weeks ago after our commission meeting and attended the spring workshop. I'm still. Need to reach out to Chris to make, to see if I can get some of those, um, presentations, the PowerPoint, so I can get those handed out. Haven't, uh, had a chance to do that yet. I'll get that done here today. And with Commissioners Vanderwall and Jensen attended the, the two hundred and fourteenth street and Samara Avenue meetings. Um, last week, Kristen and I worked on two thousand and twenty-four wage and benefit information, getting ready for budget discussions here, uh, coming up in the next month or so. Just so you're all aware, I am out of the office the rest of this week after today. Uh, Kristen and I are attending an HR conference down in Yankton. And our new, uh, veteran service assistant starts on Monday, so that's exciting to get him on board. And then, other than that, just some upcoming dates, um. You can see those there. I don't know that there was anything else, um, that I, that, uh. Got added, um, you can take a look at those. Just an item to note too, the, the safety week. If you wanna participate in some of the events that are coming up that week, like our fire drill and our, and our lockdown drill, let me know and I can let you know when those are, so you can be here to participate in those. Um, the picnic is that Thursday, the fifteenth. And then, um, just looking out a little ways, make sure that you do have the budget hearings on your calendar for the twenty-sixth. And Conservation District Tour on August ninth. I think they have to officially, um. Approve that date themselves, but I think they plan to do that whenever they have their next meeting, so. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Questions? All right, State Stewards' report. Commissioners' report, uh, Commissioner Bartley?
Well, I'll start with, I did attend the SDA ACC. Here along with the rest of you, and, uh, there were some really good meetings, the DOT one with. It was a couple of, uh, presentations and I think we'll get some slides on that too, but. Uh, the biggest thing there is there's state DOT funds and there's federal DOT funds. And how you apply for those dictates how much paperwork is involved with the two, two applications, obviously state. One is, is a little bit less complicated, but a little less money. The, uh, federal one requires an awful lot of hoops to step through to go through those particular programs. I don't believe most of those applications are out yet. They don't have all the rules written yet, so the money's somewhere, uh, in the federal system, so. Uh, that's been transferred the amount anyway to the state DOT. I'm not sure exactly how to administer it, but we'll see. So that was an interesting discussion and then we talked about equalization and, and, uh, values of property and where we're going with, uh, with that in the, in the future, as everybody's concerned about that. Um, then there was a great parliamentary procedure presentation from First District, uh, which I gave a little bad time for, so it was, got a lot of fun. Other than that, um, did attend the BDC April Board Meeting on the twenty-sixth. A lot of discussion on the, the, BDC's role and the city of Brookings Economic Development. Plan that they released, uh, about a month ago, uh, parts of it are, uh, on the auspices of BDC to ta, take the lead. Uh, part of those things, so there's some discussion on how we, how we proceed with taking the lead on the things that this plan asked us to take the lead on. Uh, there are other people taking leads on other things, so, uh, that completes my report.
All right, Commissioner.
Extension Board Meeting, uh, continued work on budget. Still in need for volunteers and increased, there's an increase in shooting sport participants and, uh, about, um. All the animals and everything, there's just an increase in, in kids, uh, and just, uh. Hopefully some more people would step up to volunteer to help like at achievement days and such. On the nineteenth, attended the workshop in Pier, Commissioner Bartley gave a good report on everything out there, um. There was a lot of, there was pretty good attendance, um, over half the new, you know, there were new commissioners there, uh. I felt it was very informative, uh, there were some new, new meetings and some new information. It was a pretty good deal. On, uh, twenty-fourth, attended the Samara Avenue, uh, meeting, gave a overview of that and also the two hundred and fourteenth, uh, street. Had some goals for the project on two fourteenth, uh, truck route plus residential traffic. Uh, pedestrian use possible and economic growth to promote. We're, they're still in the design phase, um, with, uh, elevations of the roadway. The higher the elevation, the more structures that would be needed, so trying to figure out, uh, what design criteria to build to. It'd be a five-year. Flood, ten-year, vice versa, um. They're still collecting data on that and we'll have another meeting in the future. Other than that, that's all I had.
All right, Commissioner Hostler?
Uh, nineteenth. Uh, South Dakota ACC. Uh, Commissioner, there was a lot of good information. Really was, uh, really was a good couple of days. Um, twenty-first, I attended the Brookings and Moody County Lincoln Day Dinner out at Swift Hill Center. On twenty-sixth, uh, attended the Brookings Economic Development Committee meeting, uh, virtually. Uh, as Commissioner Bartley reported on, uh, goings on there. And on the twenty-seventh, uh, we had the Brookings Domestic Abuse Shelter meeting, um, we're getting close to, uh. And on the twenty-seventh, uh, we had the Brookings Domestic Abuse Shelter meeting. Um, we're getting close to, uh, finding a new executive director. Uh, they are, uh, in the last stages and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be making an offer, uh, for that position. And that is my report.
All right. Um, I, twelfth with, uh, Brookings School. Election agreement. Um, on the twentieth, uh, had a meeting with Brookings County Housing, um, and we ended up, uh, uh, renewing that contract with, uh, um, with our, our provider there for the section eight housing. Um, and then on the twenty-fourth, I had a hospital board meeting. Um, we had a, a reception actually at the Brookings Foundation. Uh, hospital board is, has a sponsor of the new, um, First Bank and Trust basketball facility there. And so they had a little reception for us there. Starting at five with a board meeting to follow. And that's all I have. All right. Next. In accordance to South Dakota codified law, one dash two-five dash two for one, four, and six, personnel, contract, and security. Um, after that, we still do have another, um, uh, action item after we come out of executive session, but right now I'd look for a motion to enter into executive session.
Don't move.
Check.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Take a ten-minute break.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. For twelve, action to approve request to fill vacancy on the state's attorney's office. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Second, discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Next on is adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment, second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. We are adjourned.